regions.
Oh.
And they were complaining they didn't have much lag.
Yeah.
It's still a little to keep some people happy.
You know, yeah.
I can make people happy. It's the least I can do. Well, it can probably be less than people would notice. My sign in time down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. The time is now five P M.
All right, it's five o'clock.
There we go. All right, it is five o'clock. Welcome to the Monday meeting, March sixth. A special hybrid meeting of Livermore City Council. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bariantos. Councilmember Branning.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kick.
Here.
Mayor Marshawn.
Here. Let's see, this is a special meeting. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council this evening? Do we have anybody online? Everybody in the audience?
No comments have been received.
Okay, in that case, I will close the public comment period and we can move right on to the item of special agenda. Madam City Clerk, City Clerk, City Manager. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Honorable Mayor Marshawn and members of the City Council, this is your City Manager, Mariana Marashiva. The purpose of today's workshop is to introduce to you and to all community the city's first comprehensive strategic plan, along with the results of the community survey, as well as the preliminary financial plan. The strategic plan is included with the agenda packet and also available online. The plan was developed over the last few months by city staff and reflects each department's goals and objectives for the next five years. The strategic plan, as you can see on the chart before you, was informed by the city's vision, mission, and values, key guiding documents such as the general plan, as well as the results of the biennial resident survey. The plan itself will serve as a framework for the financial and policy decisions that we will be making as a city in the next few years. It will also help guide daily activities of our staff in serving our community. The strategic plan will also serve as a structure for regular council and community reporting. In a few moments, our Assistant City Manager Christine Martin will review the results of the community survey, as well as highlight key components of the city's strategic plan. Next, our Administrative Services Director Tina Olson will provide a summary of the city's financial plan. Developed in alignment with the strategic plan, the financial plan contemplates allocation of city's resources to key operating and capital priorities. Now let me turn the floor over to our Assistant City Manager Christine Martin. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Marashiva, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council members. This evening, I will present the 2022 National Community Survey Results and the proposed five-year citywide strategic plan. The National Community Survey is something that the City of Livermore has done every two years since 2004. We partnered with the National Research Center to administer the survey. The survey captures residents' opinions regarding ten broad facets of a community, and those include economy, mobility, community design, utilities, safety, natural environment, parks and recreation, health and wellness, inclusivity and engagement, and education, arts, and culture. Once again, the overall 2022 results for Livermore are positive and reflect the community's view that Livermore is a great place to live with a high quality of life. On this slide, you will see just five of the over one hundred forty items included in the survey. The full report is included in your packet this evening and an interactive version is posted on the city's website. The first pie chart shows responses for quality of life in Livermore. Eighty-nine percent of respondents rated Livermore's quality of life as good or excellent. The second shows responses for Livermore as a place to live. Ninety-two percent of respondents rated Livermore as a good or excellent place to live. Next, shows responses for Livermore's, Livermore's overall economic health. And there you can see eighty percent rated that as good or excellent. Next is the overall feeling of safety in Livermore, where eighty percent rated that as good or excellent. And lastly, Livermore's overall quality of the natural environment, where eighty-five percent of respondents rated that as good or excellent. And as City Manager Marashiva explained earlier, the survey is just one of several factors that inform the citywide strategic plan being presented this evening. That is a picture of the cover of the strategic plan. And the strategic plan is organized around five community pillars. Those are a safe community that thrives, economy that prospers, environmental stewardship, sorry, that slide is incorrect, it's environmental stewardship, and inclusive and inviting spaces and places, and a city that works. Each of the pillars will be implemented with specific goals and objectives. And on the course of the next few slides, we will look more in depth at each pillar and the categories of goals that fall under each. I will also provide two examples of goals under each pillar to get, to give a sense of the breadth and depth of the services and programs that your staff provides. The full strategic plan was included in your packet and is available online on the city's website. So the first pillar is a safe community that thrives. This pillar supports facilities, designs, programs, and ensures compliance with regulations that create a healthy, resilient, and engaged community that is prepared, safe, and housed. Goals under this pillar fall under seven categories, including public safety and development permitting and housing and human services, to name just two. An example of a goal under public safety is to provide proactive and effective public safety and crime prevention through direct enforcement, education, and partnerships. And an example of a goal under housing and human services is to expand and improve access to human services. Our second pillar is an economy that prospers. This is to encourage a thriving business environment that results in a strong, diverse, resilient economy and supports community prosperity. Goals under this pillar fall under four categories, including business engagement, diversification resilience, innovation, and major development. An example of a goal under business engagement is to lead efforts in collaboration with internal and external partners to provide effective communication and engagement with businesses. And an example of a goal under major development is to implement the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. The next pillar is environmental stewardship. This is to preserve and protect Livermore's climate and environment for future generations and to become a lead municipal leader in sustainability, reducing and drawing down greenhouse gas emissions and encouraging sustainable development. Goals under this pillar fall under three categories, including climate action implementation, solid waste recycling, and environmental regulation compliance. An example under climate action implementation is to lead efforts to implement the updated Climate Action Plan in collaboration with internal and external partners. And an example of a goal under solid waste recycling is to manage the city's solid waste contract and develop and implement the city's recycling program, ensuring compliance with state and local regulations. Our fourth pillar is inclusive and inviting spaces and places. This is to create inclusive and inviting natural and built places and spaces for contemplation, play, arts, and connection while celebrating our history and encouraging community pride. Goals under this pillar fall under six categories, including sense of place and the library, to name just two. An example of a goal under sense of place includes continuing to implement the downtown specific plan. And an example of a goal under the library is to affirm equity and inclusion by reflecting the diverse local community and staffing, materials, and services offered. And our final pillar is a city that works. This is to foster an organization that is fiscally sustainable, innovative, effective, and efficient, provides excellent public services, invests in professional development and well-being of employees in alignment with the community and organizational values, and responsibly invests in the city's infrastructure. Goals under this pillar fall under eight different categories, including customer service and community engagement and organizational efficiency, again, to just name two. An example of a goal under customer service and community engagement is to facilitate youth engagement opportunities. And an example of a goal under organizational efficiency is to modernize key business systems and processes to increase efficiency and improve transparency. So just to recap briefly, the strategic plan is organized under five community pillars, and I just shared two goals under each pillar, but keep in mind there are more than fifty goals across all of the pillars. Each of those goals has at least one, if not several, objectives to implement that goal. These objectives comprise the services and work that your staff perform on a daily basis or will program to perform over the coming five years. And with that, I will turn it over to Administrative Services Director Tina Olson to walk you through the five-year financial plan, which allows staff to implement all the goals and objectives that I just walked you through.
Good evening. I'm Tina Olson, your Administrative Services Director. I'm gonna, as Christine said, I'm gonna present the five-year financial plan. Just to give you a little bit of a background, we developed the five-year financial plan concurrently with the five-year strategic plan to identify expected and ongoing revenues and expenses, as well as prioritize new positions and contractual services necessary to implement the five-year strategic plan. I just wanted to emphasize that this is not the two-year budget. We are in the process of developing the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget, as well as the Capital Improvement Program or the C I P. And we plan to present that at council, at a council budget workshop on May fifteenth, or adoption in June. The numbers will likely vary from what I'm presenting this evening, since this is more of a forecast. Next slide, please. So our base assumptions in the five-year forecast, it's really the forecast that we had in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget update. We added estimated tax revenues associated with development that we expect to occur over the next five years, and a couple of slides we'll go over what that is. The assumptions used for the five-year forecast include revenues increasing by four percent in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and three percent annually thereafter. We have some breakdown of property tax is expected to increase at a higher rate than sales tax over those years, and those are really coming estimates from our consultant H D L. Personnel services, three percent a year annual increase. Calpers is consistent with the Calpers' most recent estimates, and they're relatively flat for a couple of years, and then we're going to see some declines as we're paying down the unfunded pension liability. Services and supplies increasing by two and three percent annually. And then, as I said earlier, and we'll go over the next slide, estimated tax revenues from future development based on expected housing and commercial development. So we worked with staff from the Planning and Economic Development Divisions to identify development that we expect to come online in the next five years. And then we developed tax revenue estimates associated with that, and the taxes are property taxes, sales tax, and transient occupancy taxes. The developments, we have some examples up there, but the downtown development is, the biggest one will be the hotel, but also Blacksmith Square and legacy housing. The biggest one is Isabel Neighborhood Plan, specific plan, and those are the new housing units coming online. And then various commercial development, we have Form Factor Manufacturing Facility, Gilig Office Building and Surface Mining Permit Warehouse. Those are some of the big examples of development that's included in this five-year plan. And as you can see from the table, the last two years have significant revenue increases. It's five point three million in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and almost six point two million in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. That is mostly being driven by the Isabel Neighborhood Plan. Next slide. So we also went through a process of identifying the positions. Every department went through and said, what new positions will we, do we need, particularly within light of the five-year strategic plan and toward implement the plan? And we came up with forty-eight positions. And based on the expected revenues, as well as reducing the allocation to the C I P by one million dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four, we believe we can fund six new positions in twenty-three, twenty-four, five new positions in twenty-four, twenty-five, and thirty-three positions in twenty-five, twenty-six, and then two positions each in the last two years. We have some examples for in twenty-three, twenty-four, police records clerk. It's basically every kind of position in the city is actually on the overall list, but here's some smatterings. A building inspector, associate civil engineer, and in twenty-four, twenty-five, a principal planner, neighborhood preservation officer, supervising librarian. And then in twenty-five, twenty-six, one near and dear to my heart, I T operations and help desk manager, urban forest specialist, and police officer. And those last, the two in the last two years are police officers, and there really is the build out of Isabel's happening. We're projecting to need additional police officers. Next slide. We also went through and looked at what additional contractual services we would need. We do not expect to be able to afford increased contractual services in twenty-three, twenty-four, and that's why there's nothing there. And then twenty-four, twenty-five, we can start adding about a half a million, growing to one point two million and one million. And we have some examples up there. Probably the biggest contractual services needs in the next few years is going to be the general plan and housing element update. But we also have library, technology upgrades, communication supports, and then we have several just smaller I T type contracts we'll need. Next. So bringing it all together, this is the five-year financial plan. As you can see, I've highlighted in light green where the estimated tax revenues come in, and we highlighted in the light yellow, new positions and new contractual services, and those are from the prior slides. And I think you can really see is the first two years in twenty-three, twenty-four were basically balanced, and we're going to have a total of two hundred and sixty-seven dollars remaining at twenty-four, twenty-five. And then you see that our, this is at the bottom of the chart, you can start to see the surpluses growing over the years, and by that, last year, it could be about almost five point eight million dollars of a surplus. And that's when we can start to really, I think, allocate into the C I P and repair and replacements at that point in time. The next slide. Capital planning. So we have been working on the five-year C I P. Of course, it'll be two years be allocated in the budget. And we've been working on some proposals to develop some dedicated reserves for the capital, for each of these different capital asset categories. We have general reserves for repair and replacement, and we have general reserves for C I P. And the idea is, as a part of the five-year C I P, let's, let's take some of those general reserves and put them in as dedicated reserves for each asset category, so we know exactly what we want to spend. And those asset categories are stormwater, essential facility repairs and improvements. I know we have up there the fire station six, police department campus improvements. We have sidewalk repair and replacement. And that's, of course, the sidewalk repair program. Wall and fence repair and replacement. I know we have up there the home street wall, phase three. That's, that's a project we definitely have defined and should be going into the C I P. Tree maintenance, five-year rotational pruning program, and then landscape median islands. Railroad Avenue, Marietta to P Street are the ones identified there. But the idea is really to create these dedicated reserves, and as we're doing the C I P, we will have those dedicated reserves and will help us keep our eye on the asset repair and replacement program as we're going through the C I Ps. And turn it over to you, Mariana.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Olson. Mayor and City Council members, back to you, City Manager. This is our last slide, I promise. So a few things before we finalize the presentation. One is, I just wanted to emphasize how thoughtful our city has been in planning ahead. You have two critical documents before you today. One is the strategic plan with the goals and the objectives, and the second is the five-year financial plan, and they work together. And staff, every single member of the executive team and most of city staff have put in time and resources to thoughtfully develop those two documents, looking ahead in the next five years. What additional positions will we need to serve our community? What capital assets do we need to invest in? Not a lot of cities do this well. Not a lot of cities have strategic plans. Not a lot of cities have five-year financial plans. So I just wanted to applaud the City Council for your leadership and support, and also applaud our team for spending the time spent in the last few months working on these critical documents. And just really very briefly outlining what's on the slide before you. What's next? Today, we're seeking your comments, questions, input on the strategic plan. If any of the goals or objectives don't make sense, if you have any questions, let us know. We will take that input. We'll finalize the strategic plan. We'll make sure that it's available to the public through publications, through town hall meetings, through videos. And every six months or so, we will reevaluate the strategic plan, and if changes are necessary, we'll make those changes in consultation with the City Council. Lastly, we will continue with the weekly reporting that you receive via email. And about every six months, we will also produce a report to the community tracking progress against the goals and objectives in the strategic plan. So with that, I wanted to thank you for your attention, Mayor and City Council, and again, wanted to thank our staff for hours and months of dedicated work that has gone into the development of these documents. Thank you.
Wow. Talk about a forty thousand foot flyover. It just, that's a tremendous amount of information. Wow. So with that, I'll open up to the council for comments. Anybody want to start off? Okay, you're looking at the Councilmember Branning.
Whatever order. I'm not picky on that.
Okay. Take it away.
Sure. So I have a number of comments, but before I get to those comments, I do really want to commend staff for this amazing job. I don't know if Mariana mentioned it this time, but this was done entirely in-house, and that's an incredibly rare feat. I know it took a lot of work to get to this point. And so I just really want to thank everyone on staff for the time and effort they put in to make sure that this was a really awesome document. It's readable. It's easy to follow. It's easy to see where the city's going and kind of imagine what we look like in five years while you're reading through this document. So excellent work. Everyone should take a, take a deep breath, a sigh of relief, whichever you want, and pat yourself on the back. On the back, I think you've done awesome, awesome work. So I have a general comment first, and then I'll get into my specific comments. And one thing I noted when we're going in the strategic plan is there's very few items that were listed specifically for years three, four, and five. And I understand that we came from a two-year cycle of kind of planning. There are things that are ongoing, but I just want to make sure that staff hears the message of, I don't want you guys getting burnt out. I don't want you floating everything and thinking it has to happen right now. We want, we need, there are many things we need to get done in the next year or two. But where there are things that maybe could be pushed out to year three and won't affect the quality of life in Livermore, I'd like staff to kind of consider that, and as we come to updates, and we've seen what the scope of work is really looking like. I think everyone on council would understand if you said, hey, this can't happen in the first two years realistically, or it won't be quality if it happens so quickly. So it's just a general comment through the plan. Getting to specifics, or would you prefer general comments from everyone, and then I go to specifics, or?
Let's do, like, we'll get just general comments, yeah. And then we can just get out of the line, then we can hit the specifics.
Well, yeah, I have a bunch of specific goal comments.
I think we all do. Great, thank you. Councilmember Bariantos, any global comments at this point?
A global one?
Yeah, any general ones?
I'll try to stay within California. I have one question is, I guess you all know what's going on. Oakland, is there anything that, a budget for cybersecurity, because you know, they're leaking the information out now and when they got into their network over there. I didn't see unless you're, maybe it's in there somewhere. But, you know, I, I am a teacher, so I will compliment you. And you, yeah, like the reports are nice, and I like the graphics, because I look at those too, and it helps a lot when I look at them, not just looking at the words and numbers. But I appreciate your report, and yet I looked at it. But that's my only thing. There's a few other things that I guess I'll bring those up later.
Mayor, if I may, very quickly, Councilmember Bariantos, thank you for your question, and I think for the benefit of the viewing public. The City of Oakland suffered a cyber attack that it is still not clear the extent of the cyber attack with potentially publicly identifiable information stolen related to city staff and potentially residents. So we take cybersecurity here in the city very seriously. We will take a look at the strategic plan to make sure that cybersecurity is specifically mentioned, but I will share with the mayor and city council that just a few days ago, we conducted a significant comprehensive tabletop exercise focusing specifically on cybersecurity. And it was an exercise that included our regional, state, and federal partners. So I just wanted to assure the mayor and city council, especially in light of what happened in the City of Oakland, that we take cybersecurity very seriously, but we will make sure that it's reflected in the strategic plan.
Well, my reason is because, you know, we have nice little budgets and all that, and, you know, they can throw a whole monkey wrench in our budget and what's going on with us if they get a hold of our information.
I, I just wanted to add to, City Manager said, we do have a dedicated staff person to cybersecurity, which is very unusual for a city our size. And we have a cybersecurity budget with several contracts to help protect our system in essence, without getting into too much detail. But, and that came out of the cybersecurity exercise last week, just how well-prepared we are and how fortified we are.
And there is a goal on cybersecurity with a couple of objectives. It's goal twelve under the last pillar.
And of course, there's ongoing staff training. And, you know, ongoing exercises to ensure that we maintain our secure system. We weathered a significant attack a couple of years ago and came back up remarkably quickly with the assistance of our national laboratories. So we do have resources here that a lot of agencies do not. So I understand that that is a significant concern here, and we have dedicated significant resources to that end. In fact, there's, we got Steve back there right now sort of overseeing the whole system. So we certainly appreciate that as well. So thank you for that, for bringing that up. Councilmember Carling.
I don't have, I have several specific things, so I'll hold those, but I, I guess I've been involved in lots of strategic planning at the laboratory every time we changed a manager. It seemed like we had to do another strategic plan, so I know it takes a fair amount of effort. And one of the things in my mantras, and I think Brandon will probably remember this, is what are you going to, what behaviors are you going to change now that you have the strategic plan? And that was always the measure that I used when we redid a strategic plan at the laboratory, is how are you going to change your behavior? And so I guess keep that in mind, otherwise it's just a piece of paper that doesn't have any real impact. Other than it looks beautiful. I mean, I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Bariantos, that the graphics are beautiful. The photographs are just stunning about our, our city. So I think whoever went about taking those should be commended. So I guess keeping that in mind is, how do you change your behavior based on a strategic plan?
Vice Mayor.
A couple of things. I appreciate this different approach. As before, we were presented with work plans, made some choices. What I like about this specifically is that it provides some stability for staff, which I think improves our attractiveness as a great place to work that is less influenced by political uncertainty, maybe if there was a council. less influenced by political uncertainty, maybe if there was a council who decided that they were going to upend everything that they've been working on. It also allows us to respect staff for the experts they are, rather than tell staff what they need to be experts in. So I just appreciate this strategy. In general, what I would love to make clear is that this is like a big, this is a, like you said, a forty-foot view. But after this, with our comments, we will be receiving more documentation, a work plan, a two-year financial plan. And that's where real specificity comes. Am I correct on?
Vice Mayor, yes, the two-year budget will closely follow the strategic plan. There will not be a detailed work plan. However, as we work on implementing new technologies such as Asana, there will be reporting every six months that will provide really status updates on how we're doing as a city with regards to goals and objectives.
Okay, awesome. So there will be, a lot of these seem kind of fluffy, just there's some goals that are grow. What does grow mean? Does grow mean one thing, or does it mean a hundred things? And so that specificity is just sometimes impossible based on the goal. But where, where there are numbers, whether it come with the budget cycle or in those reporting, it's, I would love to see more of that, but that's my one big overarching goal, and then I'll come back with specifics. But thank you, this is beautiful.
To expand a little bit on councilmember Branding's point. Yeah, this was kind of a, it's this transition, because I've, I've been around long enough that there were council transitions where the county, the city was going in one direction, and all of a sudden the majority changed and it made a real sharp turn. And there are staff members here that remember those days. So going from those, that the two-year where we would have the, the citizen survey, and everybody would get sort of their marching orders, where you have a two-year goal and priority workshop. And so we'd be marching off in that two-year goal, and all of a sudden, we get another citizen survey, and we sort of changed that a little bit and go in a different direction. So yeah, this, this is a strategic plan. And so as we transition to that, I think this is these three documents, I mean, this is, it's a tremendous amount of information here, and there's a tremendous amount of effort. And I certainly appreciate all of the, the work that went into these, very readable, very very high level. And I think that as we continue to, to dig, dig down into this, we will see those, those goals begin to crystallize. And then we start looking at the financial capability, that capacity to achieve those goals and those priorities, continue to move ahead and the, the number one goal and priority, and that's the quality of life that our residents have come to expect. And how do we bring everything together to, to make that happen? So with that, let's get down into the specifics. The, this is councilmember Barrientos, do you have any specifics that you would like to? As I said, we looked at a tremendous amount of information here. Any specifics that you would like to, to speak to?
Well, still, I'm a rookie at this, but anyway. I do have one question in the city that works, and I guess you know, the surveys that came out ranked us one of the top areas to live in. And I guess, I think we all got number one or something like that. And it said that the biggest thing that people like is that engagement with the city council and all that. And I was trying to figure what ideas, I have some with the city council or the council engagement. And do you have any things you have in mind?
Councilmember Barrientos, are you referring to residents' engagement, perhaps increasing resident engagement with city council?
Yes, I think the more you know, the better they will react to certain things coming down the line.
Absolutely. Well, it's, thank you, it's a very good example, and, and there are very specific goals and priorities that have to deal with community engagement. And we engage with the community in so many different ways. And I think recently, in the last few months, we expanded how and what formats we're engaging with the community. So when it comes specifically to the city council, of course, in addition to council meetings, you have advisory bodies that speak on your behalf, that you appoint, and and they provide forums for the community to, to engage. In addition, we, we're also implementing a, a new tool, town hall meetings that we're beginning to organize, and the first one took place in February. So that's a great opportunity for the community to be engaged. There will be a number of events throughout the community, and we're trying to take those events outside of downtown where council members can meet and greet the community and, and, and talk to them informally. One of those events is farmer's markets, and it's something that we, we did in the last few months. And last but not least, engaging with the community on social media and through newsletters and so on. So there will be multiple platforms, but when it comes to face-to-face, again, town hall meetings is something that is going to be relatively new. And additional events outside of downtown that will be happening in different neighborhoods of the city will provide that opportunity.
A couple of points that you're talking about social media engagement, the government 101 videos that we're putting out now very, very helpful. The engagement that we have on, on Nextdoor, for example, we have Asena Smith does a great, does a great job for the PD on our social media, Nextdoor, Nextdoor and a few others. But those sorts of events, one of, one of the challenges that I think we have is also in the citizen survey. It showed that thirty-seven percent of the people really lacked the interest to get involved. Seventy-one percent agreed that we have a great website. And yet fifty-six, fifty-six percent of the people said that, yeah, they didn't have the information that they wanted because they're not going to the website. So it's, it's we had a, we've had a number of town halls. I was the first mayor to hold town halls. And at a number of our town halls, we actually have more staff than we do have public. And we had the hottest issue in Livermore. We had a town hall on housing. And the staff was barely outnumbered by the number of residents that, that came. So getting people engaged is, is not an easy thing. So you, we, again, there's no silver bullet, it's silver buckshot. And we just try a number of different ways to get the community engaged. But recognizing that you can get that information out there. But it's very difficult to get people to, to read it and to become engaged. So staff is doing a tremendous job of, of using a multiple of different tools to get the community interested, excited, and engaged. So that's, we're using it multiple different ways.
And
Go ahead.
I, I was just going to jump in and say that I think what's interesting about these surveys is I know that they do compare us to similar cities. And unless there, it does do this, and I'm incorrect, what I don't see is a breakdown between the type of city government it is, if it's a council manager or a strong mayor government. Is that a breakdown when they compare us to city type?
It's not listed in there, in the, in the breakdown when we have our comparison to comparator agencies. If it's what type of government they have, but they, they do say that they compare us to similar cities. So I will check back with National Research Center and make sure that that means that they have a civil, similar form of governance as well, I would, I would think, but I don't want to assume that, that, that that is included in their similar category. I would just say from the time that I started till now, I think the overall assumption is that all cities are a strong mayor and that this is our full-time job and we do nothing else. And I think in these city manager council forms of government, that we do need to lean into the fact that the city staff are the experts and they are the people that community needs to come to the majority of the time with most of their concerns. Which is not the perception from the outside until you're right here, and then you realize that it's not physically possible. So having staff kind of take the lead on that and like having the communications person for the police department on there doing all the stuff is fantastic, because then council does not need to constantly be on Nextdoor and answering questions and Asena is way better than we would anyways. So just kind of wanted to clarify that there is a difference when we're compared to some like something that that is literally their full-time job, so.
And, and to be honest, so most of the governments that we deal with, most of our cities are mayor-manager systems. And actually, the, the exception is the strong mayor. But everybody, the public, the public thinks the mayor has a lot of power, but in, in actuality, the mayor is one vote on the council. Anything else?
Yeah, just reflecting on my past, you know, some of us learn things on the way. Just to give you an idea, I know it's frustrating because I really was never engaged, sorry, in city council information. I didn't know what was going on. And just to give you an, an idea, I taught kindergarten. Back to school night, were you informed the parents or what's going on, what you plan to do? I had sixty parents show up. When I got to middle school, I had a hundred and sixty kids. I'd be lucky if I had twelve parents. And I know it's frustrating trying to get the information out, but I think it's one thing we just got to keep pushing. And I'll do my part to do as I can to get information to people, whether they like it or not. Because I think the more they know, you know, the better we are all together.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Branning?
Thank you. So yeah, I have a number of goals or most objectives, I should say, that I think can either be modified or added. I'm just going to go through the list. I'll go through slowly and I'll look over your direction. If you give me a nod, I'm going to go to the next one. If you lean forward, I'll let you say your piece. Sound good? All right. Yeah, so the first thing is looking under the safe communities. Goal two, maybe goal four, I'm not sure. I think we should enshrine and actually mention the Livermore Police Department Citizens Academy and the volunteer program. I just think those are such an important program for the outreach, community development, keeping us safe, keeping people informed. But mentioning them in the strategic plan really drives home that they, that is one of our priorities to keep that going forward.
Then also the key to the city, which is through the city manager's office. And that's another, at least it was through the city man, city clerk's office. Whether it still is, but that's another great program to get people involved. And we've actually gotten, well, councilmembers that started in that program. Yeah, absolutely.
Definitely. So I think having those enshrined in the document would be very valuable. Continuing on for goal two. Oh, and if anyone on council wants to chime in at any point, please do. On goal two, I think we should add an objective saying something along the lines of build on the city's existing efforts through the crisis response teams to help people in a mental health crisis. I think making sure that we, you know, note that we are working with people who are in mental health crisis is an important part of the public safety apparatus. Moving on to goal seven, which is the affordable housing goal. Simply, under the first bullet point, it lists different income types. I think we need to also include very low income as one of the income types that we're building housing for. On goal eight, I have a few thoughts. Having come from the Human Services Commission, of course, this is an area near and dear to my heart. So under goal eight, which is expand and improve access to human services. I think we should add an objective to seek additional funding for services in Livermore. As many people on staff might know, the SOE fund is running out. And we have been using roughly eighty thousand dollars a year of that money to pay for services. And with that going away, there is a gap for our service providers. And having served on that committee, the eighty thousand dollars does amazing work. It really is punching well above its weight for the services it provides. So I think we need to seek additional funding sources to make sure that we can replenish that or, you know, find an alternate funding source. Continuing on with goal eight. I think we should add an objective with wording somewhat akin to facilitating efforts of regional nonprofits to find sustainable resources to provide physical and mental health care for Livermore residents. I think that's a long-term goal. It's something that really is going to take several years to get to, but the services for physical and mental health in the Tri-Valley are, are an area that does still need improvement. And a lot of our medical-eligible residents could have, could use a little bit of extra help there. And so I think in the long run, that's something we should be working with our partners to see if we can improve.
Well, I think in there are partners of Alameda County. Yeah, Alameda County is the agency that is appropriately funded to provide the mental health services. And we really need to coordinate so that they can, they really have had a noticeable absence here in the Tri-Valley. And that's something that we are ongoing, working with, with the board of supervisors to ensure that we have greater support out here in the Tri-Valley, because there, there is a demonstrated need. And I think what's happened is there's been this perception that we don't have that need. And the, the city staff and the council have been working to increase that awareness with the board of supervisors. So, so great point, great, and that hasn't been ignored, and it's going to be, be more noticeable. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, it's one, I was working with the wording on this one to try to make sure it was not, you know, we don't have the funds to fund that sort of facility inside the city, and it's not our, our place. So making sure, you know, it was working with our partners to get it going. And the county is
There we go.
the partner of the state as well, but the county really is where the funds would come from. But being the squeaky wheel, just a small story.
And CDBG is another, another one that we use, and that's of course the feds.
Definitely. And just a small story on that. I was on the dental health subcommittee for the Public Health Committee for Alameda County. And I just basically sat on the committee and just kept saying Livermore over and over and over again, and got Livermore to be one of the focus areas for dentical and dental health in the Alameda County Dental Health Plan. So just that being there in the room and making sure they know there is the need really helps for getting those funds moving. With that additionally, under goal eight still, adding another objective to facilitate partnerships, coordination, and communication between nonprofits serving Livermore. The idea behind this is we do have a number of nonprofits that are working in groups such as the TVNPA. And just kind of giving a little nudge from the city to help them when they're coordinating with other nonprofits to avoid overlaps in services. We do I think actually a really good job here. And so just that little nudge of helping them out. All right, moving on to goal nine, which is facilitate new residential development consistent with the city's general plan. I think adding a work plan item, I don't know if this actually fits into the document itself. But just working on shifting fee to per square foot from per unit where feasible to promote a variety of developments. I think we're going to need to, I believe there's some state legislation over that as well, but whether that deserves its own line as an objective or just something we work on towards that objective, I think it's important. Lastly, in this section, goal fourteen, maybe elsewhere, maybe goal ten. I think we need to, or we should add an objective with wording somewhat akin to update the active transportation plan and city ordinances to improve road safety. Maybe adding extra specificity of, you know, for all users, for multimodal use, something akin to that. Since I realized I've been talking for a really long time. Do you want me to continue through the rest of the document, or do you want me to?
You know, why don't you, and then we'll just transition and then, and then we'll be done.
Okay, sounds good. The other sections, I don't have as many comments on, but moving on to the economy that sorry, now I'm forgetting, the economy that prospers. This section, I don't have too much to add. Under goal two, my only addition I wanted to see was under the first objective, which is lead initiatives and programs to help strengthen Livermore's ability to attract and retain workforce of diverse backgrounds and skill levels. Add at the end of that, just the words, making a livable wage. So to make sure we're looking for, you know, well-paying jobs where people can survive. In the next section, environmental stewardship. I thought it was, this was a great one. I thought it was very Uh, I thought it was, this was a great one. I thought it was very, uh, covered pretty much everything I wanted to say. Under the first goal, I wanted to add an objective, uh, which is to update the city codes, uh, to incur. Update the city codes to and encourage residents, commercial and city landscaping to incorporate edible and native plants. So, uh, it's a little bit of a challenge with landscaping plans to include edible plants currently, particularly on commercial projects for a number of reasons. And I can see Paul looking. Uh, but I do think it's something important. They've done it in other cities. I can talk more about it. But it actually has worked really well where they've done, or even some of the city buildings. They put in a native garden, staff just tends to it in their free time. And it's shown mental health benefits. It gets fresh vegetables and fruits for staff and residents. It does have some ups and downs, and then of course, native plants have a lot of advantages. And so current city code makes it a little tricky when it gets particularly to edible plants, so kind of updating there. Uh, and then under goal two. Uh, adding an objective just to, which I think we're doing, I don't know if this needs its own objective. But educate and partner with local food operations to divert food waste. It is, yeah, there is a state law around it, and so just continuing our efforts there, I think would be very valuable. And then I have just a few general comments, kind of somewhere. I didn't know where exactly these fit. And so, um, one is just having a little bit of, uh, an objective somewhere or possibly a goal somewhere of increasing programming in areas outside of the downtown. I know that's been one of the focuses of the city, um, over the years, but just continuing that trend to make sure that every part of the city gets to enjoy the services that the city provides. I received a comment just before the meeting, uh, asking about, uh, having more about the wine country character included something, a goal or something, a goal or an objective that speaks to maintaining the character of our community, um, including the wine country aspects.
Well, actually that, let me see if I can find that, page twenty-seven. Uh, it actually speaks to that because it says, uh, grow Livermore's experience economy specifically within food, beverage, uh, entertainment, entertainment industries. So I think, you know, we're also talking about not just the, the wine, but also beer, because we have the craft beer. Uh, and, uh, you know, kombucha is coming up real big now. And, uh, so I think that we've got that, but rather than just, we have a tremendous wine heritage, but at the same time, uh, we're going to be fostering other things. But recognizing that in, as we do that, we also need to ensure that we have, uh, the infrastructure, like the hotel and the, the infrastructure that the entertainment industry needs. Yeah, I saw that too, and I thought they didn't say wine, but we're talking about all those beverages and that whole, the, the whole industry.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, this was a, you know, last, last minute comment from someone. So I appreciate you catching.
But I picked up on that one, yeah.
Um, and then, uh, another comment that someone gave me just before the meeting was just including in here, or I don't know if this is something we're working on, but ensuring that there's adequate staff levels to meet the goals of the strategic plan.
It's the city manager's job and pounding that into us.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, just on that last comment, this is why we brought the strategic plan and the financial plan together because they do go together. And as Ms. Olson explained, the allocation of resources in the five-year plan and two-year budget will have to follow the strategic plan. And just very quickly, um, Councilmember Brennan, thank you for your comments. I think most of them have point out to the work that we're already doing that just needs to be reflected. So we, we took notes and, uh, will incorporate them into the strategic plan. There are a couple that you mentioned that are more at the work plan level that we will consider, such as changing our impact fees to be per square foot. Uh, so that may not show up in the strategic plan, but I think for the most part, your comments have to do with the work that's already taken place or will be planned. Um, so it just needs to reflect in five-year plan, but thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, an amazing document. I really appreciate everyone's work and I'll pass it along.
Well, and this is, I think, the great thing about having the diverse council that we have is we have, everybody picks up on different things. You know, because all, we all think a little bit differently. Uh, so I think it's great to have these different perspectives because, you know, there are some things that people have brought up as like, I never thought of that. Um, but we all think a little bit differently and we all come at, at problems of, in a slightly different fashion. So that's, uh, that's why I think it's, it's great to have these conversations. Yeah, Councilperson Carling.
It's hard to follow the kind of, uh, attention to detail. I didn't do that.
The granular level.
Um, generally, I think I, a couple of things that I specifically about the strategic plan. I, I appreciate the definition of terms right at the beginning and also very much appreciate the change of legacy to stewardship. I was really scratching my head about legacy when you gave, when the city manager gave me that copy the other day. I do. I want to talk about the survey a little bit, or mostly is what I want to talk about, the survey. And of course, we're talking about what, four hundred responses out of whatever we sent out. So thirteen percent or something like that, I don't know. It seemed to me I saw someplace else where the last time we did this, we got a much higher number, didn't we?
That's correct. That is correct. Your recollection is really good. But the last time we also increased the number, uh, it was the first year National Community, National Research Center did it a little differently. And they, um, sent out, we did six thousand, uh, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to point fingers. I just, I mean, you said in this, in the staff report that thirteen percent is not an unexpected number, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and so it's, it's a little hard to, to judge the accuracy of this. I mean, I think we maybe overly depend on some of the very high scores that we get. And we brag about that, but, uh, we
Getting straight.
Yeah, we don't pay a lot of attention to some of the nuances in there. I, just a couple of things that seem contradictory to me. For example, like, one of the questions was overall safety was eighty-one percent. Yet the next two questions were, do you feel safe in your neighborhood? Ninety-eight. And do you feel safe downtown? Ninety-six. Okay, so where don't they feel safe? What, in somebody else's neighborhood? I don't know. But it's, that's, I mean, so we have to be a little careful is my point in this.
You need to spend more time on next door. People
No, I spend no time on next door. Thank you very much. I don't, I don't need that.
You get that, that, that sense because there's so much angst out in the community that, uh, that's, I think that's where that came from.
Wherever. It's just contradictory in my point of view. I don't, they talk about code enforcement at fifty-one percent. I don't even know what that exactly means. Does somebody, what does code enforcement mean to the public, I guess? I, and I don't know what that, so I'm not looking for an answer right now, but the other thing that I I focused on was, um, people thought we, nineteen percent of the people thought we had adequate affordable housing. That's pretty darn low. And so we're trying to build a more affordable housing, but we're getting pushed back from a few people. And that's just really disappointing that we're still fighting this and, and it reflected in the survey that the public doesn't think we have enough. And yet, again, we have a small number of people that are trying to prevent it. I was disappointed that, uh, travel by bike went down. Uh, and yet I think we, the city has done a good job in, in paying a lot of attention to that. Certainly, we have a planning commission that's very focused on that. And certainly, some of the folks up here on the dais are very focused on biking. So it was disappointing to me that that went down, but that's the way it goes. I, and then I'd like to take credit for the parking numbers that went up from forty-six percent to sixty-four. So apparently, we, the fact that we focused on parking has been recognized by at least some of the people.
That's what people want.
They, I absolutely agree, and apparently it's showed in the survey. And the last thing that I guess on the survey was that most people, the cleanliness of the city went up a few percent. And again, I think that's maybe not apparent to all the public. But we've spent a fair amount of money from the general fund on a company called Block by Block, which we started back roughly four years ago, something like that. After, after, um, Councilmember Monroe and I spent some time on the, uh, homeless subcommittee. And one of the things we ended up proposing was hiring block by block to keep the downtown clean. And I, I guess I'd like to, um, take credit for the increase in the, the fact that the public sees that we're a clean city. And I say, I mean, it's not just block by block, but the street sweeping comes through on a regular basis. I know it's on Wednesdays, whether once a month or every other week or something like that. I'm not sure what the frequency is, but again, I, I certainly appreciate that. And I know that we drive over to, um, one of our sons lives in Alameda, and we drive over there a fair amount. We drive through an area of Oakland that I don't think is particularly necessarily a lower income part of town. But, you know, you drive through some of those areas and there's just all kinds of trash and detritus that's along the roadway, and it's just really disappointing. And I, and I don't see that much in our community. So again, I appreciate. And in fact, I think recently we've taken up on the graffiti. And again, congratulate the staff on that. I know the mayor has been, carries a graffiti kit in his car. So thank you to the mayor for doing your part. But I, again, appreciate, uh, the city staff and, um, and the folks that spend time doing that. Because I think it's shown in the survey, uh, for an increase in, uh, having a clean and beautiful city. So again, I thank you and I, uh, I appreciate, um, the financial plan. I'm not a financial person. I, as I've said to some of you, I, one of the great things about being a director at the laboratory was I had a financial analyst that I could rely on. So it's not my bailiwick. So, uh, Tina, thank you for what you do for this community. And I appreciate the forecast and appreciate what you've, uh, provided to us this evening. So thank you very much. That's it for me.
The city also has, uh, the graffiti and litter abatement daily, the glad to be in Livermore program. So that's been rebooted. So, uh, so people are aware, uh, and I think that's a lot of, I've talked to a lot of people, uh, that when they walk their dogs, they carry a trash bag with them. So they pick up, uh, litter as they go, because as they're already out in the community, uh, it's just that awareness. And I think that's, uh, that's what makes it a difference.
I think it's important for the community to know that we've put money where the concerns have been from the community, whether it's in parking or cleanliness and affordable housing and that kind of thing. I think that's an important message to the community that we're spending their taxpayer dollars to address the issues that they see most important.
Well, Kathy, Kathy out in the downtown, I mean, we, we would see her out there, uh, every day, uh, cleaning up the downtown. So that was something that was very, very important. So great. Thank you very much.
Booted. Can I see your printed copy for a second?
Oh, um, sure.
Thanks. Um, yes, I have, I forgot to turn the mic on. One question about staffing. Did, did it say that it's like the first year's six or four and then thirty-three in year three? Okay, I was just making sure. That's like a big jump, very large jump. That's great. I'm glad we can afford thirty-three in a couple of years. Just wanted to make sure I had that number correct. Yeah, yeah, okay. I was like, am I seeing double? Does that say three or thirty-three? Yes, thirty-three. Okay. Um, so I have a couple um, comments. One is the two-year goals from the last two-year cycle, where the general plan, asset management and stormwater, downtown, homeless and affordable housing. All of those I can see in these goals. The last goal that I can't see is modernization. And I have a feeling we've made a ton of progress, but there's no way we're done. And I feel like modernization fits in all of them. So in this beginning section of like organizational values or something, if we can add something like, we promise to not only continuously improve, but that we continue to stay within the century that we live in so that we can, yeah, do things on computers and maybe go paperless and all those other things that may, aren't listed out here, but are just how we get the work done, if we can address that in somewhere.
As an old dog, I resemble that remark.
So Vice Mayor Kick, um, this is Christine Martin, Assistant City Manager. That is actually one of our goals. You might have missed it. There are over fifty in the, in the plan. Uh, it's in the pillar, A City That Works, and it's goal eleven. It's, um, on page forty-two of your attachment. It's to modernize key business systems and processes to increase efficiency and improve transparency. And then there are nine objectives underneath that that are all being currently done to implement modernization goal.
You know why? This page has the coolest picture of bubbles on it. It's very distracting.
Well, I'm sorry about the cool picture.
Well, I am glad that, uh, that actually is quite clear, and now I am quite embarrassed. However, never mind, we'll move on. Um, uh, okay, and my other thing was about, um, count piggybacking off what, um, Councilmember Brennan said about mental health. The nine-eight-eight system is live and what is our what is that going to look like? And there are some benchmarks in the state that we're going to have to meet. So however, we want to hear about that, just that specific program. Is going to be the talk of many cities and counties. Coming soon. Uh, this is nitpicky and you can tell me that maybe it's fine the way it is. Goal number ten is transportation and traffic safety under pillar one. I would argue strongly that traffic safety is public safety and that maybe it should be considered public safety with traffic safety as a high consideration. I think sometimes when those things get separated out, um, pedestrians and people on bikes are not considered as important when it's way below public safety on the list. And I think keeping those people safe is within that role and that job. So just something to think about. Um, and then the last thing is about, um, in our reporting, we're having those weekly updates. There's going to be that biannual, um, and that's all great. But something that I think is a process issue that we've seen a couple of times um, is sometimes not everything matches. Maybe this one project that we're presented doesn't match our active transportation plan or our climate action plan. Because we had a lot of plans and something that is a suggestion um, that could be simple, and you can tell me that I'm absolutely wrong and you can do it some other way, is um, now that we have the strategic plan, when a staff report comes to us, it would be wonderful if we could see what pillar does this support? Because if it doesn't support a pillar, we don't need to do it. Um, and that would be great. In addition, what plans that we live by, general plan, active transportation plan, climate plan? Which plans do those align with? And it's a reminder for us and a reminder for staff that there are a lot of things we have to keep in alignment here, um, because sometimes I'll find out five minutes before a meeting, uh, I have a complaint. It doesn't match up with the transportation plan, but I already had a briefing on it with you two weeks ago and I didn't notice till then. And you didn't notice because you had other things going on. So just those things that we do on a regular basis that we all need reminders and checkboxes of, staff reports kind of look exactly the same, but that's kind of added to the form, making it easier for staff to say, yes, this lines up. I know in theory, all of those things should be lined up, but we're human and sometimes things get forgotten and we forget to ask questions. So, um, that is just about it, I think. Go ahead.
Well, thank you. Wow, there was, there was just a tremendous amount of information. So, um, I'm going to be sort of all over the map, so but bear with me if you will, please. I think I'm going to start with the, uh, the community survey. I, I was, I was really excited about that. I mean, I got it as an email, uh, and just, I, I got it like 11:30 at night and I just sat down and read the whole thing. It was, uh, because it was, it was what I wanted to see. Uh, because we had just come through an extraordinarily divisive election, uh, where we were told about how bad everything was. And I thought it was going to bring the mood of this community down. And then when I read it, it's like, yes, what we're doing here is the right thing. Uh, the number one priority for our community was the overall economic health, because they understand how important this is, because as I used to ta- tell people the first time around, um, the economy, the budget is so important because, um, as we increase the economy and we increase the revenues, then that is what allows us to do everything else. Uh, all the stuff that we want to do, we can't do that unless we've got the revenue to do it. And the fact that the overall economic health was, was number one and the, the overall feeling of safety. Uh, that was, that was the, the same. And the fact that when you go through this, uh, and you see that the percentage of people thinking that it, that our overall economic health, uh, is, is still very, very good. And the fact that we have, uh, 98% of the people feel that they're safe in their neighborhoods. Uh, 96% safe in the downtown, um, customer service, 83%. Uh, and the overall direction of Livermore, still 63%. I'm the fact that we came through this extremely divisive election, uh, and yet most of the people figure we're on the right track, uh, 92%, a great place to live and raise a family. So, uh, all of those things were very, um, uh, they were, they were affirmative. Uh, we felt very affirmed about what was going on. Um, going back to I think 2011, um, on the same survey, we were in the 60% of, of people, uh, voting. Last election, 91% of the people, we actually increased the voter turnout, uh, 30% by changing election, election date from odd years to even years. Um, so I think that we still were 84%. I think the county average was around 56%, uh, but that, that's still, that's remarkable. I already talked about the, uh, lack of interest and how do you get people engaged in their community? Uh, one of the things that we found, the things that was interesting was in the comparisons, they talked about, uh, the five districts of the city. And we have four election districts. And I wonder how we ended up with five districts for the survey. And yet we have four districts for, uh, uh, for, for our community. So, um, figure out how we can, you know, work on that one next time. Uh, how, maybe we can, we're talking about alignment. How do we get people to, uh, align districts with the survey and align districts with the, the voters? Uh, so with that, uh, but I, I was, I was really excited to see how the survey turned out. I think that was, uh, um, that was great. The, uh, going along with the, uh, strategic plan, I already talked about how we've gone from the, uh, uh, the two-year goals and priorities to, uh, the, 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 the larger strategic plan. I think that's very important. On page 19, I'm going to just do kind of a, a, a large, uh, overarching thing here as well. Uh, page 19, identify and recommend changes to policies, processes and programs to help businesses come to Livermore, stay and succeed in Livermore. Just had a great tour of Monarch Tractor. Monarch Tractor started out with a plywood topped, um, autonomous tractor in 2019. They came to Livermore with 15 employees. They now have over 250. Uh, so they are looking at the next set of the next, the next phase of growth. And we have to make sure that we maintain a, an inventory of the commercial and manufacturing, uh, land. So that new businesses that we attract have the room and capability to grow. Uh, so, uh, to grow and locate and expand. So we were lucky when, when Gillig came in, uh, that was a real interesting thing. Gillig, that site was, we had originally looked at that we had taken this large parcels of businesses. And we thought, well, let's cut this up into small, uh, innovative sites for like, uh, you know, 20 or 30,000, uh, square feet. Because that's, that's the next phase. And it sat there for 10, 15 years and did nothing. Uh, and then Gillig comes in and they needed a big site. So we consolidated that and we brought in Gillig, which was a huge asset for our community. So we need to maintain a sufficient inventory of businesses, uh, of, of land for that commercial and manufacturing sector. Uh, when the South Front goes in, we're going to lose about 700, uh, uh, 700, uh, hang on a second here, skip to groove, uh, yeah, we're going to lose 700 acres of, uh, of manufacturing and commercial site. So how do we, as we're, as we're going through this general plan, uh, advisory committee process, how do we maintain that inventory of those lands? So just something that as we're moving through this, uh, this general plan, uh, review, how do we, how do we, we keep those? Uh, and as we, we move through the process. Um, again, goal, uh, number three, number, uh, an objective, uh, enable the creation of high value commercial facilities and attract high growth innovative companies. We need to have the inventory to do that. Let's see, uh, getting down to the weeds here on page 23, uh, the climate action. Uh, lead efforts to cool neighborhoods by expanding the urban tree canopy, uh, and carbon farming, uh, drought friendly landscaping. Um, you're talking about alignment of goals, drought friendly landscaping. A lot of people think drought friendly landscaping is rocks. Uh, rocks raise that heat sink. Uh, so you're bringing in trees to, uh, increase the canopy, but you bring in rocks and you increase that heat sink. Uh, and you actually heat up neighborhoods rather than cool them down. So, um, predicting the, the legacy trees and mulch placement. Uh, drought tolerant landscaping is not just rocks and bricks and hardscape. So, um, the, just awareness on that. Um, but entered.
Like, uh, carbon sequest- landscape with, with focus on, on native plants and harvest sequestration, like something more specific? Because drought tolerant.
I give that to the experts. Uh, I'm just kind of, but, uh, again, just, most people think about drought as rocks, drought tolerant as rocks. And no, there's a lot more creative things that you can do with that. Um, we've already talked about the, uh, um, the, the, the food and entertainment industries. Uh, but again, making sure that we have the, uh, hotel and tourism infrastructure that we need to, uh, to support those industries and the appropriately zoned, uh, parcels to do that. And, um, let's see. Partnerships, uh, facilitate active coordination with businesses, residents and community partners for special events. This, uh, Sunday, we had the half marathon downtown. What a great event that was. We had 2,000 people, uh, from states as far as Hawaii and Maryland. Uh, we had, uh, from Brazil and British Columbia. That was a great event. Uh, so our partner with Livermore Downtown Inc., as I tell people, we don't do fun stuff. We depend on partners like Rotary and Livermore Downtown to do our parades, to do the fireworks on 4th of July. Uh, so those type of partnerships are extraordinarily valuable. I just wanted to, uh, uh, to shout out that to the great partners that we currently have. Uh, increase the availability of variety of transportation options. Valley Link, uh, this is huge effort. So, uh, we've got a lot of the whole Tri Valley is, is behind Valley Link. Uh, so we just need to keep the conversation up on that as well. Um, and community engagement, uh, we've talked about that. We've increased our, the social media platforms. I mentioned the videos that we have, uh, in multiple languages. We have a challenge. 37% of the people actually admit that they have no interest. Uh, that's, that's a, a, a big lift to get people interested. Uh, we just asked several thousand people what their opinion was. We wanted to hear from them and only 13% answered us. Um, we put it in their hands. We put the stuff in their hands and said, please talk to us. And whether it wasn't convenient, uh, they set it down and then put more mail on top of it. And it got lost in what I call the archaeological dig of my mail. Um, those are, those are, are, are things that, that we're continuing to deal with. People are busy. Uh, people are commuting. They've got, they've got the limited bandwidth. So how do we, how do we engage them? Staff is doing a tremendous job of trying different ways, but there are so many different ways now that people get their information. Uh, how do you, how do you get onto that plate? So that you, you get a little share of that, uh, that, uh, that bandwidth that they have. So staff is doing a great job. I'll tell you, Azineth is doing a wonderful job with the PD, uh, with the fire department. That's why you guys, your numbers are so good, the police department and the fire department. Um, you guys are in the, and ladies, I'm sorry, but, but, but I used that globally. But the police and fire department, you are in the worst day of people's lives business. That's what you do. Uh, and the fact that you have numbers that high, that our community hold you in such high esteem, um, in the eighties and nineties percent, uh, when you deal with them on the worst day of their lives. It speaks to a tremendous job our public safety officers do. And I thank you, thank you so much for that. Um, and with that, um, I think that's all of my bookmarks. I've gone through the five, oh, the one last question on the five-year financial plan. Um, the $20 million for the, um, flood control, is that exclusively, uh, CIP or is that also, uh, MRP? Is that municipal regional plan by the Regional Water Quality Control Board? The additional monitoring, the, uh, basins that we require, um, or is that just replacement type stuff?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take this question. Um, it's, it can be all of the above. The caveat is while we initially played with the numbers and hypothetically set aside 20 million, what you saw before you, uh, this evening is we're not quite ready to assign numbers to categories. And the reason for it is every single day, uh, there's a new priority unfunded need that comes to our attention. Whether it's, uh, a new fire station in Isabel neighborhood or improvements to Fire Station Six. So we're still trying to determine, given the amount of money that we have overall, how it's going to be allocated to individual categories. But to your point on storm drains, all of the examples that you mentioned could be funded and the specifics will be brought forward before you in May as we review the capital improvement program.
Okay. Yeah. Cause that was one of the things I know that the last time I looked at this, a couple of years ago, um, there were the Regional Water Quality Control Board was looking at additional unfunded mandates for monitoring. We were getting no water quality benefits. It was just an increased monitoring. I think that was about two, $2 million a year. Uh, so looking at the, the flood control, uh, those are very big numbers. And as I said, flood control is an unfunded mandate. Uh, there's no, um, revenue stream on, on, uh, stormwater. So it's a, it is a big challenge. So that was just a, a quick question. As you pointed out, uh, one of the things that we need to look at is things like the Springtown open space. And how do we fund something that whether there are needs in the community center that you spoke of? Uh, so there's, uh, uh, as our former city manager used to say, there is no extra money. Uh, but, uh, this strategic plan is going to give us, uh, um, a lens through which we can find solutions. And with the, the input from this committee and from the, uh, the council and, and all of our advisory bodies, which we look to provide input from the community. Uh, it's going to help to refine that vision as we move ahead. But looking at the citizen survey, I am very confident that we are meeting the goals, uh, that we have heard from the community. Uh, that we, it proves that we listen to the community. Uh, and the fact that our numbers are going up shows that, uh, we have been successful at listening. Uh, we just need to, uh, we need the public to, um, step up and, and provide greater, uh, uh, greater feedback on, on what we're doing. But I think the citizen survey does, uh, goes a long way to say that, uh, that, that we are achieving our, our goals. Um, so is there any other comments, uh, that anybody would like to, uh, say before we?
I did now clearly, yes, organizational efficiency is on there. There, not every department is reflected. I know it says citywide. This is a, uh, this is a shout out from a former councilperson. To see if going paperless is still a plan. And if it is, if we could get it on goal 11 of a city that.
Some of us love paper.
Well, clearly, cause I got locked out.
Yeah. You see, so you needed this. You needed that. And now.
Just, if it is a plan, then it should probably go there. If it's not, then, then it shouldn't go there.
I remember that now, I don't, you, you actually never saw it, but my office, there, the, 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 the main hazard was the threat of avalanche and, um, because of the paper. Uh, so I'm, I'm getting better about it. Uh, but sometimes you just need to have that, that hard copy as we demonstrated tonight. So, uh, um, as, 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 as best works for, uh, for all the, uh, the system, if we can go to paperless, uh, or if we can reduce, there we go. Let's reduce the amount of paper that we use, uh, but I'm not ready to go paperless. As I said, that's a new trick and I'm an old dog and, uh, I may be a dinosaur, but I do it well.
Well, Vice Mayor and, and Mayor, there is a goal and an objective that addresses, um, our intention to go paperless. So, um, we will work towards that goal. We may not achieve it in the first couple of years, but it's there. Uh, and Mayor, if I may, just really, um, uh, from, uh, the executive team and myself, just wanted to express appreciation to every single one of you for, um, very thoughtful comments. Uh, we clearly have an engaged city council and that helps us as city staff. But I also wanted to very quickly address Councilmember Carling's comment on how will this plan change the behavior? And so a couple of things that we wanted to share, um, one of the next steps that is, uh, on the work plan for us is to share this information with every single city employee. Most of our employees participated in developing this plan. And now we will go back and through department-specific and city-wide briefings, we're going to educate every single employee on the strategic plan. And that will allow for a couple of things. One is it will allow city employees to see how their daily work fits in the overall picture of the city, how they contribute to the efforts of the city. But in addition, hopefully it will emphasize for employees what our priorities are, such as customer service, such as partnerships, such as, uh, housing, such as working with our business partners, environment and so on. So as they go forward and, and deliver services and, and provide, um, uh, exceptional customer service to our community, they will keep those priorities in mind. So that's where we hope that the behavior will continue, but also will change as a result of the strategic plan. So thank you again for the opportunity on behalf of the executive team to be here before you today and, and to present these comprehensive documents. And thank you again for your input.
Well, again, thank you for the tremendous amount of work that, uh, that went into these. And the, uh, I, I will say that from the, the council, uh, we have probably eliminated 95% of the paper that the council uses, because we used to get these 800, 800-page packets every two weeks. Uh, and now it all comes, uh, on the iPad. So, uh, uh, I know we've cut a tremendous amount of paper here and, uh, we've got, uh, online permitting now. So there's a tremendous effort to, uh, reduce the amount of paper, but I'm not ready to give it a ball. So.
Working against the law, not suggesting an ordinance.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay. Very good. But we've, we've, we've done, we, we have, let's celebrate the victories. Uh, uh, this, this 92% of the people think we're doing a great job and, uh, we've reduced our paper by 95%. So, um, thank you for all the great work.
Can I make, can I make more comments?
Yes, Councilmember Barry, yes.
Um, some either. Anyway, um, I got them in order. I do agree with Mr. Carling, uh, Councilman Carling about the survey. I haven't ever received one. I don't know who gets, I get. I haven't ever received one. I don't know who gets, I get Democratic ones all the time. Of course you want money on top of that. But, uh, and then we do, I, I really appreciate Christine, your project updates that it gives you, gives you an idea of what's going on. And then three, trash, I think it's, it's you, you're involved with it too, and you see graffiti, you clean it up. I do too. And it works if people see. Just back to school. When I was Vice Minister, I took time to pick up trash and kids would be having, why are you doing that? It's, it's my school. I like, and before I knew it, all these kids were picking up trash. And I think it's like a cultural thing that they would keep it clean. They, they, people will appreciate it and do it. Uh, then the other thing is, oh, I used to pick up trash by neighborhood when I walk my dogs, but they took the garbage cans away. So now I have to carry these bags all the way around for the mile or two that I walk with my dogs. It's after a while, it gets cumbersome. And, uh, may I find a way to get garbage cans back there again? And then the other thing is, uh, Mr. Branning, uh, we've been talking about, Marianne and I, about having a community garden over in Springtown. Cause we have a big golf course that just grows weeds right now. I guess the rabbits like it, the gophers bit. We were thinking about a community garden that I think, you know, we can plant the rain, you kind of squash this coming out. And then, uh, I think that's it. I have, I'm not sure it's, the camp report that showed that we were falling behind on repairs for infrastructure, that's worked into this, right? And I think some people would like to see how we're catching up with that, because I know the reports that we're falling way behind. And, uh, you know, I go to Oakland and I take some of my boys home. And one, I'm sure if I had a glass of milk, by the time I got them home, it'd be milkshake. Cause the roads are so bad and it's really, really terrible in parts of Oakland. But, you know, that's, you know, they're, they're so far behind, like keeping the streets repaired. And I want to make sure and hope that we can keep up on top of that.
Yeah, we have in our pavement, pavement condition index is in the top 25% of the, of the, uh, of elementary counties. So, um, our pavement is, is actually in very good condition.
Yeah.
We, 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 we follow the PCI.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, very quickly to address Councilmember Bari Antis' last comment, uh, asset management continues to be a priority for us. It is sprinkled all over the strategic plan. And as, uh, Ms. Olson mentioned, uh, we're developing reserves for every single asset category, sidewalks, walls and so on. So when we are before you in May with the capital improvement program, you will see funding allocated to those reserves for future projects and also specific projects for the next five years. The challenge is going to be staffing. We have needs. We don't have enough money to address all of those needs, but we also don't have enough staff to, uh, implement all the capital projects that need to be implemented. So it will continue to be a challenge for us, but again, the details will be shared with you in May.
Yeah. And to that point, um, I, I, the, the homes wall with the, which is, but that's not just the wall, but the fence, the, the, the home's fence and how we ended up with that being a city asset and not the, uh, the property owner. That was, uh, that was an interesting, uh, coup. But, uh, um, but yeah, so that's a, we're, we're still working on that, I'm sure. That's a, a long-term, long-term goal. That's the long-term asset. So, very good. And any other comments? Thank, again, on those three documents, there was a, again, a 40,000-foot flyover, tremendous amount of information, but it showed a tremendous amount of effort by staff put those together. So thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. Great read. Uh, and with that, I'm going to adjourn to, uh, the next regular meeting on March 13th. Thank you.